Good evening, everyone. We'll get our meeting in session here.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington is absent. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatkowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, let us have a moment of silence for the 17 victims of the useless carnage that happened at the high school recently.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, and bills for payment on February 7th and 23rd, 2018.
Excuse me. I appreciate the crowd tonight here. Please, we do have business to take care of. If everyone could please be quiet and respectful as we go through the process of our City Council meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatkowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Looks like we have a few presentations this evening. I'm going to go start with Mel Witherspoon. He has two presentations to give tonight.
Mr. Antoine Holman. Is Mr. Holman present? Second one presentation will be made to the Erie Kiwanis Club. It's an organization that I'm sure most of you have heard of, and they are service-oriented, and they also provide services to the summer league where we had 316 young men and women playing last year, and I want to make that presentation. The president called me today. He was not able to make it, but he asked me to ask the mayor to accept this on their behalf. The mayor is also a Kiwanian. Mr. Holman. Okay, Mr. Holman is not here. He operates flagship city consultant. He as well participated in the league. He also was a coach. He assisted me in security, and we appreciate him and his company, and I'll make sure he received this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Councilwoman Liz Allen is going to present a proclamation to the Parental Alienation Awareness Day. Do we have somebody here representing them that we could do the proclamation?
Thank you for coming to council. I'm presenting this on behalf of Sonia Harrington. There is a long resolution here about what happens when there's parental alienation, and basically, though it's summed up at the end, it says, "Children should not be used as weapons or pawns to inflict emotional pain, or to enjoy financial gain as an unjust enrichment for a parent or anyone in local or state government that would benefit from the conflict." And basically, children should be allowed to love both fit parents and be able to receive the love of both fit parents in return. And I know similar resolutions have been passed at the state level. I went back and researched it today. When I found out, I would be the presenter. So, on behalf of City Council, here is the resolution recognizing your work. Thank you.
Liz, would somebody like to speak? Would you like to speak on behalf? Thank you.
This was never my forte. On behalf of our group, Parental Alienation Awareness of PA, we thank you for your efforts to bring education and awareness to this subject through your proclamations. By your action here tonight, you and the mayor and City Council, you are helping create an awareness and giving a public voice to those children and families dealing with parental alienation. It offers us a platform to continue our efforts in education and outreach for powerless children and families seeking meaningful dialogue in the public sector. And for this courageous act, I thank you, on behalf of those both in chambers this evening, and equally important, all those in the shadows of unawareness. The people you see here in blue shirts tonight, there are mothers, there are fathers, there are grandparents, and siblings. They represent a minimal percentage of those affected here, locally, statewide, and globally. A percentage of those, a small percentage of the 25 million families who are dealing with parental alienation on a daily basis. For any fit parent to mourn and grieve the loss of a child, of a live child, is the ultimate pain. For any of the 50 million children that have to live without half of their family tree as their loving parent is erased from their lives permanently is abuse. We will continue to lobby for change in the current Pennsylvania child abuse laws. As parental alienation is one of the worst forms of child psychological abuse no children should have to go through, and it should be recognized as such. Parental alienation could happen to anyone, and it should matter to everyone. Please plan on attending our upcoming conference this April at the Zem Zem Shrine Club. We again thank you very much.
Next up is repository sales. Do we have anyone in the audience tonight that's here for a repository sale? Last call. Anybody here for a repository sale? Hearing none, we will go to citizens to be heard. I just want to make a note, Mayor Shember is here to speak tonight. He will speak after all the citizens who are going to speak tonight are heard. I want to thank Mr. Shember for coming out tonight and joining us at this council meeting. On our agenda, we do have somebody who pre-signed, Ms. Mary Lee. She goes first, and then the line will follow after that. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members.
Good evening.
Some of the things I feel are not being properly, should be addressed with the necessary authorities, especially our education, the school safety in neighborhoods. Because especially a lot of the school shootings and a lot of shootings near my neighborhood are what makes me feel like I want to move out of Erie. I feel like that, I feel if we can come together and actually have some type of recognition, especially with Shember trying to do what he can, but honestly, if he can help us, then honestly, then that's what would make me happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have some items to pass out to Mayor Shember and each county council person's...
City council.
City council, sorry. First and foremost, I would like to say hello, hello, Mr. President, Erie City Council, Mayor Shember, and fellow Eriites. I know I ran for city council last year, and I know my image and presentation was stained by malicious attacks about my image, and I would like to say I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you felt that my image was stained because of hate and malicious organizations in Erie trying to take me down. I'm here for you, and I would love to have the second chance to regain your trust, your love, today. First, let's give a round of applause to our own Erie native son, Ryan Sapolsky, who is the goaltender for Team USA Hockey. Second, I attended the Erie County Human Relations Commission meeting last night and brought several items to their attention. I addressed several things like the lowest rating for the LGBT community in Erie, in Pennsylvania. Please go to the Human Rights Campaign's website to download it. Of course, council, I gave you the index. Right now, we're 37 out of 100. That's the lowest in the Commonwealth, lowest in the region, and it is appalling. I mean, we have a report that the African-American community is worse for Erie. Now it's saying the LGBT community. In 2014, we were 57 out of 100. 2016, we were 37 out of 100. 2017, we are 37 out of 100. But the municipal index indicates it's about transparency with administration, local government, and organizations, and the citizens. It's low, and it should not be low because we are a loving community, and we accept everyone for who they are. Now, I strongly urge you to look at the Pennsylvania Fairness Act because that will help our equality rating, because we can be a true LGBT-friendly destination for businesses and residents to come. And then I am giving you the city of Redding, the city of Redding, which is the fifth-largest city in the Commonwealth. Pittsburgh, Allentown, Philadelphia, State College passed the gay conversion therapy ban. What happened last week to the 17 students in Florida? Malicious attack. That's, the schools are unsafe. The community is unsafe, not just for students, but for the LGBT youth. And we need to pass gay conversion therapy in the city of Erie and in Erie County to make sure those LGBT students in the Erie School District and all the school districts in Erie County are safe, so they don't have any bullying or hatred in Erie. You have received so many things from Equality Pennsylvania concerning the LGBT community. I know 20 years ago, we passed this Human Rights Commission, and I want to say thank you for that. But another thing is, Mayor Shember, I've asked Mayor Senate to raise the pride flag, Gilbert Breakers banner, for Erie pride, and Senate said no. But yet, there was a model UN flag that was raised outside City Hall. Can I please raise the pride flag for Erie pride to have an inclusive approach to make sure the LGBT community is welcome, is accepted, and is loved in Erie? Also, the UPMC has proposed a parking lot right across the street from UPMC. Well, let's put our common sense logic minds on. I say no to that. We have people dressed up that are going to speak out about McBride viaduct. Well, why don't we take that money for that parking lot and give it to the McBride viaduct? Give it to those that aren't here standing up for what is right or what they believe in, because we don't need no parking lot in downtown Erie. We need to make sure that the money is used wisely. And UPMC and Hammett and Nick Scott are doing great things along the Bayfront. Let's put that parking lot right across the street from the Hamilton Inn that's going to be going down there, because they already are going to be putting that on there with the Harbor Place, and UPMC, Hammett, would like to have a parking lot there. It's going across the street on the Bayfront. It is dangerous. We need to put a pedestrian bridge there. We need to make sure that the parking lot goes there instead of on State Street. Put that money to good use and give it to these citizens that want to save the McBride viaduct. That's where I think the money should go to. The second thing, the last thing, I was just at the Jefferson Educational Society about the heritage commons. Please contact Ben Steinem and Dr. Fearey at Jefferson Educational Society to get in touch with Mike Furman, who talked about heritage terrorism.
Mr. Brandell, I apologize. We're going to have to cut you. Five minutes are up. We have a big crowd tonight, and we're going to be strict with the rules of council. So, five minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hello there.
Hi, my name is Tanya Taglow. I gotta go. Hi, let me start again. My name is Tanya Taglow, and I'm actually from Edinburgh, but I have many friends and acquaintances that I know that live in the city of Erie. And I know you've recently voted on tearing down the McBride viaduct. And while I'm not here to tell you whether I think that was right or wrong, not my job, I have an alternative that I would like to present to you, City Council, to help ensure that kids in Erie and the citizens of Erie stay safe while crossing the street. And the answer that I have for you is a relatively simple one, and I actually have to ask you a question that I would like you to answer while I'm presenting. How many crossing guards do you guys currently employ in the city of Erie, and where are they deployed?
Unfortunately, this isn't a question-and-answer session, which I appreciate the question. I don't think anybody here has an answer for that at this time, but any questions or concerns, leave it with the clerk's office. We'll get you almost any answer you need, okay?
Because my idea is, where you know there's going to be heavy traffic of kids needing to get to school and everything, increase your level of crossing guards in the city so when the viaduct is demolished, if that doesn't get stopped, you've made the city streets safe for people crossing the street, and I would really emphasize that it could help your local economy too by creating jobs for people that don't have them. And again, you're, like, you won't be liable if people are hurt if they're not following basic traffic laws. And I know, in a way, to possibly come up with some of the money to fund this is asking the local schools that the children would be attending to maybe help you out, get the money for the budgets to make this idea a reality, because I believe along that Bayfront connector, anywhere there could be kids crossing that street trying to get to school, or adults trying to get to wherever they need to get to, or disabled people trying to get to wherever they need to be without, like, the viaduct. And, you know, if you want to send the message that you still care about your surrounding area even though you voted to take away something that promoted safety in this city, or so I've heard to a great extent, I think this would go a long way to sending goodwill. And then I do have another idea beyond the crossing guards. Maybe you can put up a footbridge eventually to replace the viaduct and make it a better sound structure for the city, and who knows what could happen in the future. Thank you very much for your time, consideration, and cooperation tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Good evening. Elena Gallagher, 505 Poplar Street. I apologize to pause the McBride viaduct momentum here, but I would like to speak about some gun control issues. Taking into consideration the massacre at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, I propose that we follow suit of Jersey City's Mayor Fullup and become more responsible with our police force weapons and attach the following questions to any bids that may come through for the purchase of their service weapons. The questions would be, what do you do to combat illegal gun trafficking and illegal gun crime? Do you manufacture and sell assault weapons for civilian use? Do you agree not to sell certain models of firearms for civilian use? Are you requiring dealers to conduct background checks? Do you fund research related to gun violence and smart gun technology? And will you commit to prohibiting your brand name from being used in violent video games? And I have a resolution.
Thank you everybody for being here. My name is John Durekian. I'm a student at Penn State Barren. And recently, members of Erie CPR as well as...
Excuse me, John. Could you state your address too, please?
Sure. 1501 Canterbury Lane.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, like I was saying, last weekend on Sunday, members of my group as well as East Erie CPR went to the communities directly surrounding the McBride viaduct to speak with the residents and to get some of their viewpoints. And from the people that I talked to, which was probably about 100, the people seemed to be overwhelmingly in support of the preservation of the viaduct for reasons that I'm sure will be talked about later today. So, my question is, why is there such a reluctance to supporting an open hearing on this issue, and what's going to be done about this? Thanks so much.
Good evening.
Diane Esser, 923 Long Point. I'm a member of the Pennsylvania Association of Environmental Educators.
Could you move the mic closer, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay. Diane Esser, 923 Long Point Drive, Erie, PA. And I'm a member of the Pennsylvania Association of Environmental Educators. And this is very short. I got a reply from Mayor Shember. Thank you so much for your reply today by email. And I wanted to share my reply to Mayor Shember, and I also wanted to acknowledge the wonderful article that Liz Allen and then Jay Brenneman wrote that was in the Erie Reader. If anybody has a chance to pick this up, these are just such well-written pieces on the history of the viaduct, the memories, and then Jay Brenneman was how he was actually part of this and had dragged his feet for a long time, but then stepped up to voice an opinion of support. So, this is just my reply. I'm sharing my reply to Mayor Shember with everybody. Thank you, Mayor Shember, for your thoughtful reply. While you feel the viaduct is structurally deficient, functionally obsolete, and is structurally redundant, or is redundant, Adam Trot from CPR and also the CPR group, which I feel has operated very well as a 501(c)(3), even they don't have the 501(c)(3) status, they have done an exemplary job as behaving as one. And I really feel that with all the support that they have had, including New York City professor and management of urban policy in New York City, Mindy Folelov, who said they support, she supported with sound reason for restoration of the viaduct. And PennDOT has said that it really could stand for about another 100 years. It's basically the skin. But most of all, there are so many voices that I feel need to be respected and honored to be listened to by a public hearing. Mayor Shember, I respectfully that you ask that you allow a public hearing that you would attend, because if something's going to die, don't let it die this way. President Madam Sonia Harrington summed it up when she said there would be a loss of hope, and the east side's already depressed. This would just really be an additional nail in that coffin. As a new mayor, you can see that the voices of the viaduct are growing, and the city is looking to a leader that will listen. And at least, please, a public hearing would serve this purpose. So, thank you. That's my request for a public hearing for the people that have grown in number. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street. First, let me start by thanking all of you for your public service. What I have here is an engineer's report on putting something on a roof. And as you can maybe see, I'll pass it around, there's all kinds of little mathematical figures that I don't understand that an engineer does and needs to provide. So, my question to you, and I understand that you can't answer that, but I'd like you to just in your own minds. So, I'm assuming when this report was done for PennDOT, they did an engineering report that showed the bridge could no longer support big vehicles. I get that. But my question is, did they do a report similar to this? Because it would have had to be a separate report on is it unsafe, structurally unsafe for people and for bicycles? So, if they did not do that report, I think all of this, these decisions have been based on nothing. So, I'm hoping that you can answer to yourselves that, yes, there was an engineer's report separate that showed it could not support structurally people and bicycles. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hello there.
Kevin Postefka, 722 East Grandview in the city. So, as much as I'd like to talk about the viaduct, and I am essentially, what's most disconcerting to me is the process. The word transparency has been bounced around here like a soccer ball, but, you know, and the way I see it, I mean, you can sit up there and beat your chest about transparency all you want, but when you vote to approve a contract to destroy a viaduct and then maneuver the idea of a public hearing off of the agenda, that doesn't smell like transparency to me. It smells, but it doesn't smell like transparency. And, you know, I also recall meetings here last year where people sitting up there voiced sentiment in favor of a public hearing, but then when a vote for that was almost put to the table, it magically disappeared. So, you know, when you say you're going to do something, and then the ensuing, following actions don't correspond with that, credibility comes into question. So, I guess I would advocate here tonight a chance at redemption and an effort to, you know, reestablish the idea of having a public hearing, because my understanding of a public hearing is where you actually take each side of the issue, break down the facts, look at it, weigh it out, and come to the best conclusion. And again, you have, one side has its facts, and the other side has its facts, but we need to maybe look at all the facts and find out what the real facts are here. You know, we don't need a national circus, all right? We can make things happen locally, cooperatively. So, I hope that we can reconsider that notion of a public hearing, you know, to whatever ends, but just a fair hearing. Thank you.
My name's Freda Teffer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. Kevin has given...
Kevin has given some documents to Rose. There's one for each council member and one for Mayor Schember. I'm going to just--
I'm here--
Whoops. Okay. Well, there's some documents, and they'll be given out. I do want to just take a moment to mention that still, after probably six months, there is not good signage up where the Erie Insurance Project is, most notably the northeast corner of 7th and French is a great example of if you're blind, good luck figuring out what the heck is going on. And I'm really surprised that yet the city has not been able to get that together. So I want to read something to the council. This is within the state code that has jurisdiction over your particular form of government. The council, in addition to such other powers and duties as may be conferred upon it by this charter or otherwise by general law, may require any city officer in his discretion to prepare and submit sworn statements regarding his official duties and the performance thereof, and may otherwise investigate the conduct of any department, office, or agency of the city government, which is precisely what we're looking for. You don't have to ask the mayor for that right. You have that. It's your authority. So as far as process, some of the things that went wrong with process, what I've given you in part is the purpose and needs. And if you see in the purpose and needs, the only place it mentions pedestrians is it talks about the people running back and forth across the connector, and it talks about north-south connectivity. It does not mention safety of the crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector. It does not talk about the exposure to air pollution, or noise pollution, or snow, or anything like that. However, those were factors. They came up at the Citizens Advisory Committee. I give you a piece of paper that mentions six different places where snow came up at the Citizens Advisory Committee, or maybe it was five, I'm not sure. But nevertheless, it's really curious that now, this late in the project, the consultant said, oh, guess what, Pendot, too? How about we put up a wall? Since all of you in October of 2017 complained about the same snow that people talked about in 2012, why don't we put up a wall? What happened in 2012? What happened to the analysis of safety? What happened to the analysis of air pollution impacts? What happened to the analysis of noise impacts? One of the documents I've given you shows how the initial preferred alternative included the crossing, no crossing at 12th and the connector. But that was added after the fact. That should have changed the considerations for safety because now a significant safety issue exists, was not considered. In no place in the document did you express, was it discussed, the impacts of air pollution to the people walking? This is a major shortfall in the study, and I think you might hear that there were issues in how the Citizens Advisory Committee was run. And structurally deficient and functionally obsolete, they are definitions that are very picky and have really nothing to do with the issue that Cindy brought up of the ability for that structure to support pedestrians and bicycles. I'm giving you a lot of very technical stuff, and I could give you even more, but I also care about the human side. I care about the people who walk that viaduct. I see them. I have walked the viaduct and the whole circuit of the viaduct and the connector numerous times. And people are going to have a heck of a time in their lives substituting that other walk, the noise of that walk, the smell of that walk, the crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector. So I urge you, council, to exercise the authority which you have to conduct a public hearing. You don't need to ask the mayor for that authority. Thank you.
My name is Ken Springer. The address, 4720 Cliff Drive. I'm here basically to oppose the demolition of the McBride viaduct. That viaduct is a viaduct of hope and opportunity. It has to be looked at in a very careful manner. I'm going to give you some examples of what some other communities have done in the course of situations like this. In New York City, many of you are probably familiar with the High Line. It was a former New York Central Railroad line on the west side of Manhattan. During the administration of Rudy Giuliani, that was to be demolished. But two New York City residents in the area, who live in the area, basically said, wait a minute, let's take a look at this. They led a community-wide, which became a citywide campaign, and their next mayor, when he came along, Michael Bloomberg, recognized the significance of the High Line, and today it's a very important tourist and educational center, an abandoned New York Central Railroad right-of-way, which because of sincere citizen concern and input, just like what you have in this community here, citizens made the case to save it. And I'm asking you to do the same thing. Shelburne Falls, Massachusetts, beautiful community in the western part of Massachusetts, had a trolley line years ago that went under in 1927. Now, the trolley line had a concrete bridge that it built crossing the Deerfield River, connecting two sections of the village together. The village is about 1,700 people. The trolley line closed in 1927, and within a year, the bridge became an eyesaw. But one of the local residents decided that we've got to do something about it, and she enlisted her garden club, mind you, in a small community. They got together, they rallied together, raised some money, bought shrubs and plants, and they ended up with the world-famous Bridge of Flowers. That bridge attracts between 20,000 and 30,000 people a year. Now Shelburne Falls is a lot smaller than Erie, but it has the same kind of population, the same kind of economic issues. They've lost most of their industry. But guess what saves the community? That Bridge of Flowers, bringing in tourists from all over the world. It's 400 feet long, it has five arches. It's a concrete five-arched bridge. It has basically saved the community and put vital, it has revitalized the community. If a community like that can do that, a city like Erie that has much more advantages economically can also do that. I think it's important to look at the human side of this thing. It's more than just facts and figures. We're looking at a situation here where it's an opportunity. You don't want to miss this opportunity. Just think of the fact that high school kids could be using this as a senior project to do restoration work, design plantings, all kinds of stuff. Another case, in San Francisco in 1947, Mayor Roger Lapham had the idea, we're going to get rid of those cable cars. They're kind of unsafe and slow. One lady, Fridell Trustman, began a citywide campaign, and she got overwhelming support. Today, the cable cars in San Francisco, the last of their type in the world, basically have been an economic boom for San Francisco, all because a retired lady took the time. And incidentally, that mayor never ran again for any office after that incident. The bottom line is, we have a golden opportunity here. I'm the author of 36 books on rail systems. There isn't another person in western Pennsylvania that can beat my track record, and I'm retired. I'm a senior citizen. The bottom line is, when I look at, I have a book called Massachusetts Trolley Heritage.
Mr. Springer--
I have that in there.
Mr. Springer, I apologize. Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much.
Please save the viaduct. Father Jerry Perscaro, 921 East Avenue.
Hello, Father.
The McBride viaduct has a special connection to St. Anne's Church, St. Anne's School, the lower east side of Erie and Buffalo Road area. Not only is it a historical landmark, but it's also a monument to the blood, sweat, and tears of generations of people. When Mayor Joe Sinan announced at a press conference on May 20 of 2010 that McBride viaduct would be closed on June 2, 2010, I don't think he or city engineer John Tushak or Pendot had any idea what a firestorm they would create closing that bridge. This bridge has become a nationwide news story. Everyone is focused on Erie, Pennsylvania. Hard to believe the future of this city is tied up in what happens to that bridge. As coordinator of the East Avenue Hess Avenue Neighborhood Watch and a priest in residence at St. Anne's Church, I can attest to the fact the majority of the neighborhood supports the saving of the McBride viaduct and its revitalization. A lot of arguments have been proposed by government officials and government agencies. They have no merit at all. Let's call it for what it is: Fake news. The McBride viaduct, argument number one. Argument one, the McBride viaduct is too old. It's an 80-year-old bridge built in 1938. False. There have been two McBride viaducts. The first was built 1937 to 1938. The second was built 1971 to 1972. The one that is standing there now is 46 years old, from '71-'72. Mayor Lou Tulio had it built. I watched it being built. I was 11 years old. Big difference between 46-year-old bridge and an 80-year-old bridge. You know the oldest bridge in the city of Erie? It's 100 years old this year, the Erie Zoo. The train goes over that zoo bridge, and it carries a locomotive that weighs tons, and it carries passenger cars with 100 passengers. And that bridge has been there 100 years, and people still are riding over it. The city spent $475,000 in 2010 to rehabilitate the concrete on that bridge. Same box-beam construction, steel girders as well. 18 different beams, spans on both sides. Up to nine feet of water from Mill Creek splashes against that bridge and is still standing there 100 years later. Second argument, the McBride viaduct and Buffalo Road interchange are tied together. False. The two McBride viaducts were always owned by the city of Erie as above-grade railroad crossing bridges. The Buffalo Road interchange is part of the East Side Bayfront Connector Highway that is owned by Pendot. Pendot made a mistake with the Buffalo Road interchange. They only did it halfway. That has nothing to do with the city of Erie. It has a lot to do with Pendot and the way they operate. The two viaducts are a city matter. There's no money. False. 80% federal, 15% state, 5% local funding has always been available for a new bridge, a rehabilitated bridge, or another alternative. At the initiative of Jessica Rand Kunsel and Pat Capabianca, city council approved setting aside $350,000 for a total project of $7 million for whatever alternative was chosen in the end. The Pennsylvania gas tax has gone up considerably. Erie County is charging a $5 registration fee. The state of Pennsylvania doubled its transportation funding to $2 billion. Pendot has said 1.3 million can be converted to rehabilitating the bridge. We also know that money that was initially earmarked for the McBride viaduct in 1999 to 2000, it doesn't seem like that was ever spent, 1.45 million dollars approved by the state. I have a document to prove it. There's no record of it being spent. $12 million escaped the city of Erie and was used to build two viaduct bridges, both 600 feet long, about the same length together as the McBride viaduct, over two sets of railroad tracks on Mill Fair Road. There's where a lot of the McBride viaduct money went to as well. Another argument, there's no public support. False. 4,562 vehicles a day were using it. 12,455 petition signatures were collected by the Save the McBride Viaduct Committee and members over one year's time. They were presented right here at city council meetings over a one-year period of time, and the mayor knew about it as well. They're on file. Jim Clem received them all. They were to repair, repave, and restore the McBride viaduct. That's more signatures than any of you council members received in votes. There are substantial errors and omissions--
Father Jerry--
Yes?
Your time has expired.
Okay, I'll be back next meeting.
Thank you, Father.
Adam Trot, 531 West 6, second floor. When people knew I was going to speak here tonight, they asked me, are you going to box the mayor? I guess they were alluding to the thing last night, which I hear was a big success. My reply to that is, I'm just a citizen architect. He's the mayor. If you look at the tail of the tape, he has quite a greater reach advantage than I do. Tonight, I'm here to talk about how for four and a half years, we have constantly worked on laying out the path for the mayor's office to be the hero here. It started out not as the hero. It started out as a very dismissive and disinvestment attitude towards the East Side, and it's been perpetuated that way all along. Nothing but misinformation and misquotes have been spewed for the last four and a half years out of the fifth floor on this issue. We give you all the material you need to change your mind and turn around, and we're just asking for a public hearing. You can be a hero with no political risk by having a public hearing. Any of you can call for it. I will give you an example. We can shred every reason that they use that they need to demolish this bridge. We can shred every one of them. I will shred one tonight, a big one that keeps popping up: ADA compliance. I have one for each council up here, and there's a attached sheet underneath. I've made this as simple as I can possibly make it. What you have is the cover sheet of a presentation that's given in the state of Oregon Department of Transportation to people that are designing highways and bridges, and the title is ADA Compliance for Bridge Projects. The very next page explains it as simply as you could possibly explain it. ADA upgrades are required for new construction and alterations only, not for maintenance. When Pendot was talking about altering the bridge for vehicles, that fell under alterations, and that's what required ADA compliance. Our plan is not altering the bridge. It's fixing in place. It's maintenance. The next sheet talks about what maintenance is. Everything we're proposing to do on that bridge is maintenance. We do not trigger ADA. There's even an additional sheet there that shows that even if you are doing something that could be considered an alteration, which we are not, there is leniency for historic bridges. They don't want ADA to force you to destroy the historical significance of a bridge. So they have that exception. In our case, if we were to alter something, the exception would relate to the length of the bridge. The bridge is at a 6% slope. A walk-on grade is 5%. So we're a percent higher than a walk-on grade. We're well under an ADA ramp, which is 8.5%, 1 in 12. In order to get 5%, we would have to extend the length of the bridge to shallow it out more. That would destroy the historical and the urban context of the bridge because they can't expand the bridge any farther. It will disrupt the traffic that gets around it there now. So this whole ADA thing has been bogus from the start, and the thing that's concerning to me is these engineers that the fifth floor kept telling us, you have to trust our engineers. Are you telling me they didn't know the simple fundamental fact about ADA compliance? Are you kidding me? That's ridiculous. Yet we're here digging it up, spending the voluntary time to lay it out, to prove why it's false, and every time we do that, to every reason they use, they just shuck and jive and come up with a new thing to deflect us with, instead of addressing the fact that they got the previous thing dead wrong. $250 a household. You know, that equals $10 million. $250 a household. You know, that equals $10 million. More than $10 million. There is no scenario to save the bridge for bike and pedestrian that's $10 million. And if you consider the local match is 5%, $250 a household is a $200 million project. So I think we need to be truthful about where these numbers are going. They're insane. What we're talking about in reality is the existing demo plan is $2 a household. Our saving the bridge plan is a little over $2 a household, caps at $3 a household. You have to understand, when you say things like $250 a household, that's divisive politics, and Erie deserves better. So please, have our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Trot. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barry Clark. I live at 2035 East 19th Street. I'm here to save the McBride Viaduct. I want to share a short story with you. And as Mr. Trot just said, it was a very successful night last night with the boxing and save the homeless last night. We're boxing the night to try to save this bridge. But my story is about a simple field mouse that lived in a barn. He overheard the farmer talking about he had a mouse problem, and he was going to lay down some poison to kill off all the mice. So the mouse got together with all the other animals in the barn and let the animals know, said, "Well, the farmer says he's going to put out some poison to kill all the mice." The rest of the animals had their little town hall meeting, said, "Well, okay, well, you go ahead. That's your problem." So the next day, the farmer's wife died. So in order to have a nice feast to honor his wife, he had to kill a few chickens, kill a pig, kill the fatty calf. But the moral of the story is, that wasn't just the mouse's problem. That was everybody's problem. Save the bridge.
Good evening.
Good evening. Beverly Potts. I reside at 605 Elm Court on the east side of Erie and have been a resident of East Avenue for 76 years. Thank you. I'm just going to start by saying I have a question for you all, and you don't need to answer it. I just want to know, are your minds made up, or are we wasting our breath and your time? My next comment was, "We're always trying to bring people into Erie. We want to bring people in here. We're a city of, oh, what, you know, places to shop and things to do." And I heard somebody say to me, "There's nothing to do in Erie. Why would we want to come to Erie?" And I think to myself, "Really? Okay." But think about it. Think about going to Rome and to Greece. Think about their ruins. Do you think anybody would dare to tear their ruins down? No, because they use the ruins to remember. Things to remember. People go to see historical places, to look at how people live, to see and remember. If we don't have things in the city of Erie for people to come to, to enjoy going through, what do we have? Tell me, what do we have? Everything needs to be refurbished. Okay, is it not our job to take that on ourselves and refurbish things? I have fought for this viaduct ever since the beginning of the time when they said, "For eight years, people, we have fought about this viaduct." Eight years. We've hassled over the issue. I think it's time that we come together as a unit and solve this issue and make the East Side of Erie come back to the East Side of Erie. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Toddlebin. I live at 135 East 33rd Street. I've lived on the Lower East Side of Erie for almost 45 years. Eighth in Pennsylvania, still was late every day to East High. I lived down on Lighthouse Street for 25 years, lived on East Avenue, Fifth and East Avenue. Always using the viaduct, every day. All my neighbors use the viaduct every day. We've watched how our neighborhood has declined over the last 30 years down there. I mean, 25 years ago, we've just carved a big concrete gash right through our neighborhood when we put the Bayfront Highway in. And we just all watched with concern as East Avenue just continued to decline and decline. You know, it used to be a nice tree-lined street from Perry Square all the way to Wayne Park, and look at it now. Completely, the nature of the whole neighborhood, the character of the whole neighborhood has changed. And then when the Bayfront Highway came in, it was like, "Okay, progress." But it was still, it wasn't equal to the viaduct. We still needed to use the viaduct every day. They were not the same. It was an irritant, extreme irritant when that viaduct was closed, because it was always inconvenient to start to get around in those neighborhoods. And then we watched as East Avenue finally just crumbled into what it is now. You know, it's really sad what's happened over there. So it is an emotional issue in our neighborhoods. It is a part of the social fabric of that neighborhood. It is a social justice issue in the neighborhood. But I just want to know, why can't we have both? You know, what is this sense of inevitability, like the bridge has to come down? I don't understand why we have to tear it down. Why can't we have both? And just as a resident, I don't understand. You know, I love this city, and I don't want to stand in the way of progress. I don't think anyone in here wants to stand in the way of progress for Erie. We want to see it thrive. We want to see people be included. We want people to be heard. We don't want to feel like we come here and you're just letting us go through and exercising futility while you just wait for us to finish. We really hope that we would be heard throughout all this. This viaduct does mean something to a lot of people. It's not just silliness. It's just not, you know, pure nostalgia and just keep it there because it's old. It really does mean something. And for that to just be tore down without acknowledging all that's happened to the East Side and without acknowledging the extreme decline over there already, just feels like another slap in the face. So as a resident, I just want to know clearly, if this truly needs to be torn down, I want clear reasons why. Why it will not work as a pedestrian, you know, walkway. Why isn't that reasonable? I have not yet heard real clear reasons. Michelle and every other citizen in Erie, we can't do that because this, this, this. But I've not heard that. It's just like, "Well, you know, like, the train's moving too fast, and we can't stop it now." That's not good enough. So, thank you.
Martha Wachukku, 320 West 8th Street. I'm actually here to talk about something else, but in regards to the viaduct. Words have meanings. They carry different rates. So we have this section here called Citizens to Be Heard, and Erie CPR is asking for a public hearing. The difference between listening to someone, someone just hearing the words coming out of your mouth and just processing it, and then being heard, someone taking in the words you're saying and acting accordingly to it, is what Erie CPR is asking you guys to do. This is a response to them not feeling heard. They want to be at the table of decision-making. They feel very much like there isn't a conversation happening. They're coming here, you're listening to them, but they're not actually being heard. So that's all I want to say about the viaduct and the process regarding that. I'm here today representing Erie Community Benefit Agreement Coalition as a community organizer for Erie County United. We have a proposal for you tonight. Erie Community Benefit Agreements are contracts between citizens, developers, and cities regarding development and making sure that everyone is benefiting from development. So there is a crisis in Erie's low-income and people-of-color neighborhoods. The 24/7 Wall Street has ranked Erie as the worst city in the country for Black Americans. The median income in zip code 16501 is $10,631, making it the lowest median income in any neighborhood in all of Pennsylvania. Working-class people are also being left out of Erie's revitalization without access to local quality jobs. The city has not yet developed any specific policies to address these disparities. What can we do right now? The mayor has proposed an expansion to LURDA, a tax break program that provides a significant benefit to companies with money to construct new facilities or rehabilitate existing facilities. It is crucial that Erie includes low-income residents and working-class people in the benefits of LURDA expansion. Erie County United and its coalition partners are fighting to ensure that any new development in Erie that receives tax benefit from LURDA meets the needs of our community. Our recommendations, as summed up by the coalition partners and our consultant, are that any tax-subsidized development, development must create local quality jobs so Erieites can reinvest in their community. That means 15% local hire for all construction jobs, 51% local hire for permanent jobs. All employees are paid a fair wage prevailing ways for construction jobs, and 175% of the minimum wage for permanent jobs. Development must include fair chance hiring, because residents who have paid their debt to society should not continue to pay their debt after release from prison. All employers must create a fair chance hiring policy that removes the criminal history from employment applications so that criminal record is not a life sentence to unemployment. Employers may only ask about criminal history if directly relates to job, example, security guards. Development must include fair pricing so Erie residents are not displaced. Developers that create housing must set aside 20% affordable housing units to prevent displacement and outpricing of locals from traditionally local neighborhoods. Development must support responsible contracting to support and ensure safety. Construction contractors must be held to a high standard to protect the health and safety of employees. This must include no wage-hour violations in past three years, joint labor management training, example, certified apprenticeship programs, OSHA safety training, and providing workers' comp, unemployment insurance, and other benefits to their employees. I'm here on behalf of some of our coalition members that couldn't make it here tonight, some of the coalition members being NAACP, Erie CPR, Booker T. Washington Center, Community Missionary Baptist Church, along with some other groups. I have here also the proposal in print. I'm going to hand to the secretary to hand out to council and anyone else who might need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Jim Magoy, 7 West 41st Street. Let's take a look at why we're here tonight. Visual the Bayfront Highway from East 12th Street up to Broad Street. First, you go over the McBride Viaduct, which was neglected by the city, a city asset that was neglected for at least 10 years. Then you go to East Avenue to Broad Street. Pendott's killing field. Fortunately, nobody's been killed yet. And if anybody wants to go up there and meet with me anytime they want, I have a friend that owns practically the entire south side of that road in that area. I've sat up there on Saturday afternoons and watched the people cross over that street or that road, including a young 19-year-old girl with a baby stroller. So now you've got a bridge, a viaduct that hasn't been maintained. Pendott's got an easy out to fix the flawed plan that they built up above with a new plan with a pedestrian bridge south of East Avenue, but they haven't secured a right of way for that yet. So I guess my question is, what's changed since the mid-'30s, when those children from St. Anne's Parish got killed? They got hit by a train, and Monsignor McBride took it upon himself to fight for that viaduct. What's changed? We're going back to an at-grade intersection, and Pendott's in on this thing big time, because now they can correct their flaws in their plan from the beginning. My question to you people tonight is, what's changed since the 1930s, and what's the next city asset that's not going to get maintained properly? Thank you for your time.
John Schubert, live at 2413 East Avenue. I'll address a few of these things. I've been on that CAC with the McBride Viaduct for approximately eight years now. I've been, we haven't had the meetings for a while, but quite frankly, I've been involved in it. I have a number of people calling me still. Where are we? Well, number one, starting out, the bridge in itself will be there for 100 years the way it is right now. It's stayed there for many years where we haven't done anything. I was by it today, over. We haven't even cleaned the drains out on that thing. We're watching the water come down, dripping off of the edges, and it's mostly superficial. The thing that bothered me the most was, I recently found out that L.R. Kimball, the man that was ahead of this thing, Brian, used to work for Pendott. And, you know, a lot of you, you weren't even here at the time. I think Mel might have been, maybe Jim. Jim was on there at the one committee. But they even had a secret meeting before this thing. Some of the representatives, the public wasn't invited and what have you. And I have a little copy here from the newspaper for consul and also one for the mayor. And the mayor, the only thing I basically wanted to say to you was that you had mentioned when you were running that you were going to, you know, work with the people, come into neighborhoods, and that's basically what we're asking. Quite frankly, I know a lot about that bridge, and I've been to every other bridge in this area, and that. But, you know, Mayor, you recently made a change in the police, for whatever reason, I'm not sure. But, you know, seriously, working with your outfit, and you weren't here, so I'm not putting any blame on you, because what needs changed is something in the engineering department. The information that we've been getting has been really crazy, and that you're getting a lot of information on there, and I think possibly some changes should be made in the engineering department. I've talked with workers with the city. A number of them I grew up with and worked with. They told me they were never instructed to clean the gutters out in the bridge, to do anything with the bridge, which is sad. And, you know, I looked at things recently. We're talking about $2 million for West 8th Street. When they put the Bayfront in, when the Bayfront was put in, it segregated a lot of the neighborhoods on the east side, and that. And the money, there's money there, over $1 million, that could be for revamping the bridge for at least foot traffic. Like I said, if you didn't do a thing with that bridge right now, we haven't done anything for years, another 50 to 100 years, that bridge would still be standing for foot traffic. And another thing is to keep in mind, for the city, we don't know what's going to happen with GE. We don't know what's going to happen with some of these other areas. If we take that bridge down, and the future comes where we need a bridge, once we take it down, you'll never get the bridge back again. So at least as long as it's standing, there's hope. But in the meantime, the safety of children. When you walk the Bayfront, and I've walked it, you're over 700 feet further that these children have to walk. And when you get to 12th and Bayfront, that is a treacherous road there. I don't even like to drive it. I had neighbors of mine that seriously, the sister lived down on 11th and East Avenue. He would go all the way over to Ash Street. We've been driving now for almost eight years over to Broad Street, over to Ash, and sometimes over to Parade if they're working on Ash Street. You know, the East Side has really been broken up an awful lot, and it really would be a help if we kept that bridge. And if you go over there, there really isn't a lot of work on that bridge. It's mostly surface things. Traffic by foot, you're never going to wear that bridge out right now. The other things, you know, I looked at some of the buildings. You can look them online. You've got your main library. 1897 it was built. Boston Store, 31, and so on down the line. I just want to pass this out to, one to consul and one to the mayor on here.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. Hello, Lisa.
Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th. Mayor Schember, council. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. I want to begin with- I want to begin with, um, a quote actually from a Kevin Flowers article recently. He said, "Schember wants to see the viaduct torn down as soon as possible because he believes it is unsafe and the city can't afford to pay ongoing maintenance costs." That sounds really reasonable. What the problem here is, Mayor, is that you are relying on unvetted advice that has been proven wrong many times. And so the people that are advising you are giving you some bad advice. For, to begin with, it's not falling down. Bill Pettit said if it was left alone, it would be there for another hundred years. What's falling off of it is the skin of the, the concrete because it has not been basic, there's no maintenance, this has been commented. You can go and see little trees growing out of the drains. Secondly, um, you mentioned that you, the city can't afford to pay the ongoing maintenance costs. This is really laughable. So little has been spent on it, and it hasn't been maintained. And if you look carefully at what Adam Trot has prepared, after the drains are cleaned, it's going to be under five grand a year to keep it maintained. So there's no huge maintenance costs. So those, so we want to make sure you know that. Now, I'm telling you these things, and, but I want to point to the record of the misinformation that you've repeated. You said that it was two hundred and fifty dollars per household to fix the bridge. We've proven that's not the case, and you actually backtracked on it. Again, you're being guided by unvetted, uh, advice. Secondly, you said to me in a meeting with your, with your cabinet, that Pendot was only going to provide about six hundred thousand dollars towards fixing the bridge. You had your engineer there, your chief of staff, the, uh, the person who's the city planner, you had a, a number of others, and the point is, is that none of them corrected you? So I had to go to Pendot and get them to email you something that said it's one-point-two-six million. So there again, you're not, you're not hearing the right information, you're making what you think is a good decision, but it's based on data that's not correct. Mr. Outlaw was in the room for this very brief meeting. He volunteered that he, uh, that eastsiders are not really concerned about this issue and that he, and from the minority perspective, he's been to the barber shops and they're not talking about the viaduct. I want to say that this is, uh, really not a very clear understanding of what people are caring about. You yourself said, when you went knocking on doors, that, that when you were a candidate, that people didn't mention the viaduct in particular. Well, I don't think they necessarily would when they're looking for a job, or they're worried about the schools closing, or somebody got gunned down. I can understand that the viaduct isn't the first thing they're going to mention. But they certainly, I bet, if asked, what do they think about the viaduct? As we have found with the people knocking on doors and the people who use the bridge, that people want that bridge to stay. Another thing that is misinformation that consistently has been a narrative out of City Hall before your, uh, entrance to the fifth floor is this idea that it's too late. They told us in twenty thirteen, it's too late, it's too late, it's too late. It's not too late till they start, not, till they actually start knocking it down. Just like you're walking down the aisle and you realize it's the wrong person, you turn around. Don't say I do. Just say no. Another big misinformation that you've been getting is that, from your perspective, the highway path is a safe one. It's not. You feel fine, you're a tall, healthy, wealthy, white guy in great shape. Try doing a wheelchair or cha, chasing a few toddlers around.
Please.
Okay. Is that five minutes?
No, it's.
Oh, okay.
Direct, okay. Not get personal, we're directing this, it's still the board, please.
Yes, okay, already. Then, um, the other piece of inform, so it's not safe, and I guess I really wish you would employ on a contract basis Freda Tepfer and get her to provide you with some of the information along with Diana Esser about the particulates and the, the soot and the psychological damage of having to walk along that route to get to school every day. And, um, then I want to also comment on the repeated statement, well, you guys have had four and a half years to raise the money. I mean, come on, buy the bridge and take care of it. Are you kidding me? They didn't tell Frontier to go take care of the bridge behind Strong Vincent, or how about, uh, over in Glenwood Park? They didn't have to go fix their bridge. I mean, this is a part of this, of the city. The city should take care of it. We are willing to form a five oh one C three and get grants. We've actually written a grant. They said, "We're not going to give you any money or even consider your, this seriously until you have a partnership going." The other, uh, thing I want to comment on is just that the people, they're, they're saying there's meetings and there've been meetings, there's never been public hearings.
Miss Austin.
I just want to.
I gotta be fair with everyone.
How many people want a public hearing? Please raise your hand.
Miss Austin. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
My name's John Ganderd. I live at fourteen oh one State Street, which is known as the Mercantile Building. And, um, when I heard about this meeting, I've been interested in this issue of the bridge for a long time, I decided before I came here that I would take a walk from where I live out to the east Bayfront, and I would walk along the Bayfront, over the CSX tracks, and then cut over and then walk the viaduct, because I wanted to get a feel for what it was like to travel both of these, of these pathways. So I decided to do it on Monday night, which as you may recall, it was raining pretty hard, got pretty wet, but that's okay. So I walked over there. First I want to comment, I walked along East Thirteenth Street, and just to let you know, the sidewalks between Parade Street and the east Bayfront on Thirteenth Street are atrocious. Um, they're a disgrace. And I know that that is a, considered a property owner responsibility. I think the city's got to begin to consider some way to deal with the sidewalks, to make them passable. There's a lot of reasons why that needs to be done. Anyways, that's a comment on that. So I get to the, the intersection, and many people have pointed out how, um, unsafe that intersection is. I don't know what the statistics are in accidents at that intersection. I do know that it feels unsafe as a pedestrian. As I, and I, in the summer, I often bicycle along the east Bayfront, go up to Barrend and back and stuff, so I, I've crossed that intersection many times on my bike, and it is, even for an adult, it's, uh, I would call it a concerning place to try to cross because of the traffic coming from many different directions that you have to pay attention to and the speed which with the traffic goes through that intersection. So I, as I was approaching the east Bayfront heading east on Twelfth Street, just as I approached the intersection, a car heading east on Twelfth Street gunned its engine and spun around and went onto the east Bayfront Parkway at high speed to the extent that the, the tires were squealing as it went by me. That's something I suspect happens frequently, uh, in that area. And again, as a pedestrian, you don't feel safe. A lot of people have said that. I would challenge any of you to go to that intersection and try to cross it at different times of the day or night in different weather conditions and tell me that you think that's an appropriate place for children to cross. I would never allow my school-aged children, if, if I still have them, mine are all grown up now, to cross that intersection, ever, ever. So I got across the intersection, I, you know, went along the Bayfront Parkway. It's noisy, the cars travel at a high rate of speed, it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. I know that there are at least two cars that went along there that were going over sixty miles an hour. One may have been going seventy. Why is that? That road was designed basically to be a freeway. That road was misdesigned, seriously misdesigned. Cars travel at a high excessive rate of speed on that road. We can't do anything about that now. But that affects the feeling of safety, that affects the aesthetics, the noise level, the sound. I wouldn't want to walk along there if it was snowing, snowplows came by, pushing that stuff up over that railing there onto the road. So then I cross over, and you can go across the McBride Viaduct. Totally different feel as a pedestrian. Quiet, peaceful. I felt liberated. You walk across it, and it's like, because there's no cars, you're not competing with cars and other vehicles and trucks. You're walking across this thing, and it's like a totally different world. And I, I just felt meditative, I felt peaceful on it. It's the first time I'd ever done that. While I was walking across it, takes about five minutes maybe, three people walked across it at the same time that I met. When I was on the east Bayfront, nobody was walking along there. Nobody. I get to the other end, and I see that there's kind of a crosswalk over to East Avenue, not well-marked, um, the blinds need to be painted, you can't really see it very well. That would need to be fixed. You need to put a walk light there and properly mark that thing to stop the cars. But if you did that, that would make crossing Twelfth Street feel relatively safe, I think. I don't think you can do anything about Twelfth and East Bayfront. That thing's in there, I don't think you can do anything to make that feel safe or be safer for pedestrian traffic. So that's about all I wanted to say. I just wanted to let you know what my experience was on a dark, rainy night, walking those two roads.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Nathan Ganderd, fourteen oh one State Street. I'm a former landscape designer. I hold a master's degree in landscape architecture. When I studied, I worked on design equity and the outcomes that happen when you put certain features or take away certain features from the built environment. I've spent years, I've worked at different city councils, uh, city planning departments, I've led community meetings, I've done outreach meetings. And that's sort of my background. With that said, th, this is very much a social justice issue, right? When we look at these things, we look at outcome. Maybe the intent was not to do X, Y, or Z, but the outcomes can be very negative, right? Removing this piece of infrastructure from the environment, regardless of the intent, will resolve, right, in the physical manifestation of class warfare, racism, and white supremacy. And we don't want to go down that route, right? What harm is there in having a meeting, having a community hearing on this issue when the community has come together? They've said, "We want this," right? "We want this, we need this," right? Everyone knows what the stakes are, and this is our chance to reverse years and decades of, you know, destroying communities, and it seems crazy, right? Like, how can a sidewalk or a bridge be racist or not racist? It can because we're looking at how comfortable people feel and the outcomes that happen, right? We're looking at asthma rates, we're looking at comfort going down the street, we're looking at, you know, safety for children crossing roads, right? If you haven't done so, I really suggest all of you, there's a, there's a large, you know, body of research on this, design equity, right? And, you know, this is our chance, right? Let's not go down that path. Let's change course in Erie and do something different. Let's do something right. Thank you.
Is there any other citizens to be heard this evening? Once again, any other citizens to be heard? Thank you. Rose, we shall continue with the agenda. Our, wait, the mayor, you want to do your response, please?
Thank you, President Wazarski, and, uh, thank you to all the city council and all the people for being here this evening. Really appreciate it. Uh, after explaining my position on the McBride Viaduct, a few, can you hear me okay? Can't hear me? Okay. Let me try again here. Is that better? Is that better? Okay, in the back? Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Please.
Please. I'd rather, if, if it's okay, if you can hear me, I'd rather sit, just because, you know, I want to be sure I deliver this as well as I can. And, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I had the chance to explain my position on the McBride Viaduct to, uh, the president of city council, Sonia Arrington. Uh, she asked me if I'd be, be willing to come tonight, which I was planning to do anyway, and take a few minutes just to present it to city council and the group as well. Uh, so I'm going to try to do this as clearly as possible. First of all, I'm open, honest, transparent, and accessible. My approach on every issue is first to listen to all sides, and the more diversity of opinion is expressed, the better, as far as I'm concerned. After hearing all points of view, I will then consult with my staff, think deeply about the issue, pray about it, and then make the decision that I think is best for Erie. Every decision I make will be based on what I believe is best for the people of Erie in the long term. And I tell you this because I want you to hold me accountable to do that. So this has been my approach to the whole McBride Viaduct issue, and the process has led me to this decision. I just want to share my position with you first, then I'll give you more detail about it. I believe that the viaduct is structurally deficient, it's unsafe, it's financially, excuse me, it's functionally obsolete, and it's redundant. Excuse me. I'm not asking you to, uh, agree with me, I'm just asking you to listen to me. There are far more important and rewarding endeavors we should prioritize in east Erie. Among these, I would include number one, helping our youth by being more aggressive with community schools. Two, aggressively implementing more community policing. Three, helping the private sector create more good, family-sustaining jobs. Three, excuse me, four, improving east Erie neighborhoods.
Excuse me. Please, please. The mayor was very respectful, listening to the citizens who did speak. I ask the same. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, it, it should be known that this is a council meeting, the mayor is a guest. He do not have to be here, and or we can ask him to leave. This is our meeting. So if we can't get the respect, then we'll ask him to leave.
Mr. President, I would agree with Mr. Witherspoon. We have sat here for over an hour and listened to you. Now give the mayor the courtesy of saying his piece. I haven't heard his statement yet.
Thank you. Duly noted.
So the fifth thing I think i, is more important that saving the viaduct is protecting people by improving east-west pedestrian safety on the east Bayfront Highway, and I'll talk more about that. And the sixth is providing access to the Bayfront Highway from Buffalo Road, and I'm talking about for vehicles there. So here's the process I went through in making my decision. I was on city council when the McBride Viaduct was closed in two thousand and ten. I studied the issue and listened to all sides in an effort to decide what is best for Erie. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen, here are some of the things that happened. There were many community meetings, mailings to neighborhood residents, meetings with residents and stakeholders. There were actually three public meetings that were held. There was a community outreach meeting, there were four citizen advisory committee meetings, and there was one public officials meeting. I also had many one-on-one and group meetings with all sides in the discussion. The results of the study, which recommended demolition then, were actually published in two thousand and fourteen. In recent years, during the final design phase, the following occurred. There was a public plan display, there were, there was a PUC meeting, there were four property owner meetings, there were two utility field view meetings, there was a stakeholder field view meeting, there was a meeting at the Port Authority with Pendot officials, city staff, elected officials, and Erie CPR. There was also an environmental justice analysis, which found no need for the bridge, and that the east side access connector provides an acceptable sidewalk and barrier for safe pedestrian travel. This does not take into account other informal meetings and conversations that occurred along the way. In addition to the exhaustive Pendot process that I just described, I was personally involved in no fewer than a dozen meetings regarding the viaduct with all interested parties, including Pendot, the city of Erie, representatives of Erie CPR, and other interested parties. The conclusion of this process for me is that the bridge is unsafe. I'm not a structural engineer or a bridge expert, but I can share with you that experts have told me, what, what experts have told me that led me to this decision. Pendot officials believe that the deck is beyond repair due to the extensive deterioration to the piers and the deck. Bill Kohler, the district bridge engineer with over thirty-seven years of experience working on hundreds of bridges in northwest Pennsylvania, indicated to us that during the last deck repairs, the deck actually crumbled, crumbled around the patches that they put in. Repurposing the viaduct for pedestrian use is also prohibitive. The design parameters used for the pedestrian bridge over the Bayfront Connector near the Penn State Barren Campus is a real good example of what would be required by the state and national design codes for a pedestrian bridge. These design specifications require such a bridge be able to support a ten-ton vehicle in addition to the pedestrian load. The lo, the lowest credible repair bid I've seen around The lowest credible repair bid I've seen around is $5 million, it's right around $5 million. We have recently been made aware that in response to the recent bridge repair budget strategy presented by CPR, there was a structural engineer named Henry Greco locally who made the following observations. First, that the work proposed in the estimate neither stabilizes nor renders the structure safe. Second, continued deterioration will accelerate with each freeze-thaw cycle. Third, the ability to allow any public safety vehicles, such as ambulances, fire rescue, and/or firefighting, on this structure is non-existent. Fourth, there's a clear and present danger to any person on the bridge, and this bridge should be closed to all traffic. Fourth, unless brought up to highway standards, the bridge poses an inherent safety hazard to both people and property. And if any of you would like to see that report, Renee Lamas, who's my assistant, has copies of those, and I think we have enough, everybody could have one. The original estimate for the demolition of the viaduct was $1,750,000. There were also additional costs in the amount of $649,220 to make some necessary improvements. Then the total, so the total cost was $2,399,220. In December, the city received a demolition bid of $620,000 from Swank, which is the company that's up working on the interchange road right now. It's significantly less expensive because the equipment's already here. This means we have an additional $705,626 that can be used to make additional improvements, such as pedestrian safety and beautifying the area. Pedestrian safety crossing the East Bayfront Highway is a very serious concern and a top priority of mine. For instance, over the last five years, at the intersection of East 6th and the Bayfront Highway, there have been 20 crashes, one fatality, and 30 injuries at that one intersection. If we delay now and do not take advantage of Swank's extremely low bid, we will lose the financial opportunity to address East Bayfront's safety concerns. Creating a safe east-west pedestrian crossing across the East Bayfront is a top priority of mine. I'm committed to empowering East Erie. As we have announced, we will engage East Erie and also other Erie neighborhoods in a process of neighborhood planning that allows them to tell us their priorities to implement projects that will result in their desired future. These Erie refocused community conversations will be taking place soon. In conclusion, I'm committed to building opportunity, restoring hope, and transforming Erie. Every decision I make will be trying to make this happen. I will continue to be open, honest, transparent, and accessible. That is why I will continue to attend at least one city council meeting each month here. I will listen to all sides on issues, and then make decisions based on what is best for the people of Erie. I know that everyone won't agree with every decision I make, but I will treat others with respect and listen to them even if we disagree. Thanks again to city council for giving me this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Schember. Thank you. Rose, now we can continue with our --
All right, ordinances for first reading. Council File 15616, an ordinance amending Part 5 of the traffic code. Title V, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Article 521 Parking General, Lee. Article 523 Parking Meters, Article 530, a mobilization of vehicles by increasing penalty provisions, redesignating off-street parking facilities, authorizing the issuance of parking permits, deleting reference to the City of Erie Traffic Court, and adding Article 531 Administrative Reimbursement. Sponsored by Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15616, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15616 by a six, nay zero, That'll take us into new business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda, please.
I would second that motion, Mr. President.
Do we have any separations? Rose, there is one, waive the rules. Should that be mentioned at this time?
No, we'll do it when we finish with the --
Separation?
Yeah, do we have any separations?
No.
No separations, well, let's move the balance of the agenda, and then we'll do the waive rules.
Sounds good.
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington is absent. That'll take us to the waive rules. This was just a little bit of a late edition for the, um, the letter from the mayor for the towing review board. So, voting to waive the rules. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. By Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that the communication is hereby received from Mayor Joseph Schember, that Massimo Sala is appointed as administrator to the towing review board. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Rose, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I went to the Sewer Authority meeting yesterday, and the mayor was there, so we were both there. There are some issues with getting bids to replace the freight elevator. The general contracting bid came in too high, so it's going to be rebid, and I think that's all the information from the Sewer Authority. I've been going to as many neighborhood watch meetings as I can, and as I think I said last time, there's lots of good stuff happening with neighborhood watches, really committed citizens. There's just one third thing I'd like to do, I don't think it's a committee report, but I do want to thank the mayor and his cabinet and the superintendent of Erie Public Schools, who recognize that the future of the city and the future of our public schools are tied together. And that is why the first meetings about the Erie refocused plan will involve listening to students who have the opportunity to talk about what they want for their neighborhoods, their community, and their futures. I've thought so much about the McBride viaduct. I understand that it's a symbol of a lot of stuff that has gone wrong in the City of Erie. But I also wanted to, when I heard somebody say fake news, and as a former journalist, that makes my skin kind of crawl, because please do not throw around the word fake But one of the things, pieces of misinformation that was put out in recent days is that, I saw a tweet by some of the people who are supporting the McBride viaduct rehab that said, "There has been no, there's been disinvestment on Erie's east side since 1938." And then there was another Facebook post that said, "Elected officials who support closing the viaduct don't care about the kids." I've also been thinking a lot about that 24/7 Wall Street report on racial disparities in Erie. I want to repeat what I said at the meeting that we had, our last council meeting. In 1999, the Erie School District opened a new East High School, $22 million investment. What we need to find out is what happened to the promise of that school in 1999. Now, one of the things that happened is that Hammer Mill closed, an international paper plant closed. October 17th, 2001, 761 people lost their jobs. That was part of the disinvestment on the east side. The City of Erie was not responsible for the closing of that mill. However, I also did a little bit more research, and I found out that in 1992, McGinnis Rolled Rings opened on East 12th Street. In 2011, Accuride invested $20 million in its East 12th Street plant. In Sunday's Erie Times News, there was an advertisement for an electrical engineer for Accuride. What I want to know is, when will Erie students be prepared to take the jobs that are here and that are for the future? I want you to know some of the statistics I looked up about East High School, which is now East Middle School. In the 2016-2017 school year, the building level academic score for East High School students, based on Pennsylvania standardized test scores, was 41.2 on a scale of 100. East scores have been sliding from 56.1 in 1415 to 42.4 in 1516. The East High graduation rate has been falling. My point is that our community has tough choices to make on how our resources are spent. Yes, it's true that the bridge rehab money could not go directly into education, but we now have an administration that says, "What happens to the schools affects what happens to the city, and what happens to the city affects what happens to the schools." I also looked up the jobs on the Erie Insurance website just yesterday, 39 jobs in the City of Erie. Those jobs are for IT analysts, they're for actuaries, general counsel, internships, human resources. Are our students prepared for those jobs? We can make that happen. We need to move forward and make sure that the east side is not forgotten, that we look at the racial disparities that got us to the place where we're at. And I'm sure that, I probably can't speak for all my colleagues, but I'm, just having been on council for a couple of weeks, I know that they are committed and that the Schumber administration is committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Murzky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I attended the Erie County Convention Center Authority meeting. They're looking to make improvements to UPMC Park. As the park has aged, you know, you always have to constantly upgrade, so they're looking for that. And also, they're in the process right now of booking conventions all the way out through 2020, and they have a very strong season ahead for 2019 with conventions booked, including a big one, which I was kind of surprised, it's actually the New York State Teachers' Association is coming in with almost 500 teachers. They must have wanted to get out of the state. But, so that's a big boon for Erie, and we're excited for that. And I also attended the Erie City Mission Knockout Homelessness yesterday, and I want to congratulate Mayor Joe Schumber on his great exhibition boxing. And I did it a few years ago, we spoke before the boxing match, and I said, "Are your shoulders sore from all that boxing?" And he said, "Absolutely." But I want to thank you for all that you did for the homeless. Over $40,000 was raised, and more is still coming in to benefit the Erie City Mission. So, thank you, Mayor, on that. And I see that there's people still in the audience, is this a class from one of the universities, or would someone like to come up and speak on behalf of your group?
Hello, my name is Carol Amon, and I'm from Gannon University, and I'd like to introduce you to the next group of professional nurses that will be graduating from Gannon in May and December. So, we're in a class that is looking at health policy and the impact that nurses can make in the community, and we thought nothing better than to come to the city council meetings so that they can really understand how to have their voices be heard. So, thank you.
And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. Ms. Schoff?
Best wishes, girls. I roomed with nurses when I went, oh, and men. I roomed with nurses at Villa Maria College in the early 80s, and I still keep in touch with them, and they are still working today. And it takes a special person to be a nurse. I actually wanted to be a nurse, and then in high school, worked at a hospital and realized that I would be taking at home too much, and decided to go into education. But I want to thank everyone here and to know that I am committed to Erie. I have been going to meetings, I am the liaison for the Water Authority, and went to the meeting. There have been water main breaks around the City of Erie, and they are doing a great job and working at all hours to get water to people. I attended the demolition delay meeting and spoke about preserving history and how important it is to have a sense of history. I, with Liz, went to a safety meeting last Thursday at the Main 911 Center, and we learned what to do in case of an emergency. And that was a very informative meeting. And attended the Jefferson Society. That is a wonderful place to go and listen to lectures, and many of them are free, they're not at all costly. And Michael Furman presented a lecture on building the Presque Isle forts in the Erie's east side neighborhood, and I was just totally moved by him. And if he gets enough support, I really believe that that will be a wonderful step in bringing about a sense of history and community togetherness for Erie and boost the tourist population, but just the citizens itself, that it's really going to be a fantastic, fantastic program developing that will be second to none. He really has a passion for the history, and it was a great history lesson that night. I want to thank Mayor Schumber for being here tonight and talking to the people directly. And I think it was at the Jefferson Society where they talked about pocket parks. And Steve, who works with the Multicultural Center, has talked about wanting a park, and perhaps we can give him a pocket park for the children to play with in that area, because he said there is no park for the children in that specific area unless they cross busy streets to get to the Pfeiffer Burley or the Hess Avenue Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kwiatowski.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ni ma zao.
I want to thank the mayor and his staff, those of them that were here, for addressing us tonight. Contrary to what you may read on social media, the mayor has not contacted this council, did not force our decision on anything. This is the first time I heard the mayor's response. So, I want to assure everybody that none of us are bought and paid for. I don't read social media, but I have somebody that keeps me informed about it. So, I take umbrance when people make comments and hide behind the anonymity of the internet. I want to thank the mayor once again, it took a lot of courage to come here and talk to people. It's easy, you know, we've had mayors in the past that didn't come here. So, I'm glad that the majority of you treated him with the respect that his office is entitled to. I attended the Parking Authority meeting recently, and there's plans for a new parking ramp, which they are studying, on the Lower West Side to go along with the Hammock Project. There'll be more update later. Plus, the new meter plan is progressing rather quickly now, and the test run should be started hopefully in the spring, and that'll bring much-needed changes. And I noted today on the -- And I noted today on the TV that they talked about possibly installing some Tesla charging stations, and I think that's something I'll bring up at the next meeting, and maybe, Jim, you can bring it up at the EMTA possibly, as something maybe we should look into. I also met with the police pension plan, and everything there is progressing well, and it's doing, it's actually reached its high point, that it's of all time and value. I met with the BPR, Blighted Property Review Committee, and my appointee is back there kind of keeping track of me, but he does a great job, John Redinger, and they've been working diligently to declare as many blighted properties we can legally. We can't make any promises, we work as fast as we can within the law, and there's a long, long process ahead of us. And I know this won't be popular tonight, but I'd like to thank Pendot for finally addressing the 38th and Pine interchange and also Old French Road. The new lights look great. I want to thank Leanne Parmeter for working with council, my fellow councilman, Bob Murzky, and I, who pushed this many years ago. And just a reminder to the citizens that if you have an interchange you're worried about, you know, bring it up to us, we will order a study, and, you know, we'll see how it goes. We have a couple other interchanges we're working on, such as the 19th Street Bridge at Parade, which I find to be a real mess, and also 33rd and Pine, and a couple on the west side that people bring to my attention. To the Gannon nurses out there, my admiration to you. Your programs stem from the old Villa Maria College, where my wife attended, and I knew many nurses there. But as a member of the military, there's two people you always protect and take care of. One is the helicopter pilots, and the other is the nurses. You know how valuable they are, especially when you need them, and this veteran appreciates everything you do. East High, Liz, I want to thank you for bringing that up. That was a very tough decision way back when I was on the school board. Some of us wanted to build it on the Upper East Side, where really, the demographics showed it should have been. That never came out. But due to a lot of persistence, we built that school on the Lower East Side. Little bit of tradition, but a little bit of hope for the Lower East Side. No one could have predicted what was going to happen, the downfall of Hammer Mill, the downsides in the GE. All those things are hard to take. But we have to move forward, and I think, I'm hoping that between the Sisters of St. Joseph that are taking an interest and the mayor's new committal to the east side, I think we're going to solve these problems. And finally, the school shootings. Nothing is more deplorable in this country than for kids to have to worry about going to school with armed guards, although we've done that for a number of years in Erie's school system. But this is a blight on America. It's a wart, actually. And it's time that this country, on both sides of the fence, conservative, liberal, Republican, Democrat, whatever you want to say, puts those differences aside, and we, I'll finish this up quick, and that we do the right thing, finally, and make sure that our youth can go to school in a safe environment and not have to worry about getting shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potowski. Very brief, as usual, I did talk to our new appointed police chief, Sparzani. We are going to be meeting with him after our March AM meeting. It's been a tradition or a job of council that we've done in the past. We meet with the police chief three, possibly four, times a year just to get an update on how things are going with the force, budget-wise, just out in the community, and this will be the first time we're meeting with the new chief and his staff, so that'll be this coming March council meeting. We look forward to that. Disappointment, Mike Tan from the EMTA is leaving us after a number of years here. He has been an asset to the EMTA. He was a prominent figure in being there when we had some trying times here. I hope we have those settled at this point. I do have great trust in the EMTA board that they will do their due diligence and get a qualified person to run the EMTA. I want to thank the mayor once again for coming down tonight. These are some trying times for us on council, and we just appreciate you being here and speaking to the public on our behalf also. And we want to wish our president, Sonia Arrington, a speedy recovery. She had a little back issue and couldn't make it tonight. The sooner you get back, the better. No pun intended, but thank you and good night. Ms. Controller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a meeting with the aggregate board last week, and good news for the funds, they performed very well for the quarter, not to mention for the overall for the year. The value of the aggregate fund is now over $271 million, which is the biggest since I've been in...
Can you repeat that?
$271 million for the aggregate board, and water reserve is now just slightly over $12 million. So, our funds have outperformed other public funds and endowment funds consistently for the year, earning returns higher than the benchmarks, which is well over the 7% target. So, they're at like 18% and 17% for the year. So, we did real well this last year. The board, we're going to just keep doing what we've been doing and reviewing the funds on a quarterly basis and make no changes right now. So, our next meeting is going to be in May, and I have all the reports, if anybody wants to review them, take a look at them, they'll be in my office. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Controller. Administration, Mr. Schember.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. First of all, you all should have at your place, I believe, an update on the January bill from Ed Betza on the contract. I'm committed to being open and communicating with you about that, and as you can see, he billed us for 56 and 3/4 hours. We, you know, expect for the year to him to come in under 1,000 hours, that was kind of one of our criteria. And in January, there were 22 working days, and he worked about 32% of them, so he's well under that kind of 50% goal. Also, he's done some really great things over the last month and a half here, and one of them was hiring Christine Doyle, who you'll be meeting soon. She is our new part-time solicitor in the solicitor's office. She was one of 16 applicants for this position, and there were some very, very good applicants who were really happy with Christine. She's planning to work right now at least Monday all day, Wednesday all day, and half a day Friday. And Ed's plan, in terms of his schedule, he'll be in Monday because we have a staff meeting, and then he'll work Thursday and probably half a day on Friday, the half a day that when Christine is not working. So, I'm really pleased with our solicitor office. They're doing great work, and I'm really encouraged by how things are moving forward And next month, I want to let you know, as you know, I'm committed to attending at least one meeting every month, and it'll normally be the evening meeting. But on July, or excuse me, on March 21st, I'm scheduled to be part of that Laughter in the Limelight series. I've got to come up with about eight minutes of jokes for that, but it's a really good fundraiser. So, I'll be attending your March 7 morning meeting instead, because I want to be here at least once a month, and you all have access to me, and I'm available to you anytime, my phone, or, you know, stop in. Although, I'll warn you, my schedule is extremely busy, so it's probably best to call and get an appointment. But I'll also be here once a month and open for any input, any questions you have, and I'll try to keep you as updated as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Rose, I think can close us.
All right, city council adjourns at 9:31. Ms. Allen, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Ms...